Meeting called to order. The time is five thirty P M. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you see that? Role call. We have eight counselors. We do have a quorum this evening. Unfinished business? None. We have no unfinished business. New business proposal eight. Madam Chair, will you read proposal number eight, twenty twenty five into record?
Proposal number eight, twenty twenty five, an ordinance fixing compensation for elected officials for the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year twenty twenty six, and providing a time when the same shall take effect.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At the October fifteenth, twenty twenty five council meeting, this proposal was referred to this committee for consideration and recommendation as part of the budget ordinance for twenty twenty six. Do counselors have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor.
Given the budget situation here where we do not have a balanced budget, zero balanced budget, I would like to recommend that civil service, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, elected officials do not receive a pay raise in twenty twenty six.
Okay.
You making that a motion?
Make a motion?
Well, I, this is discussion, right?
Discussion, okay.
I would say that if we could further discuss the potential of looking at a pay increase for the clerk who has city benefits, and my understanding is that there is an increase in insurance premiums. I'd like to see if we could maybe discuss that.
Okay, okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a, I have.
Counselor.
Because of discussion, and we're looking at not raising that. But as far as the controller concerned, if we were able to, can we, oh, let me stop for that's the first question. I don't know if this is legal or control. Can we pick and choose within that category? So can we exclude the, the clerk out of that? Good question.
Can you come to the mic, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's my understanding if she falls under that category, she's an elected official?
So I'm saying, so if we, we want to not give ourselves a raise, but we would like to give her a raise, is that possible?
I would probably have to consult with legal because I'm not exactly sure on that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was my, uh, issue with that. Then, I guess a better question for the controller would be, how much money then would a three percent raise be for a council and elected, for elected officials? I guess if you had to look at the whole group, it's, it's all of us. So it'd be council, clerk, mayor, right?
Well, I, I did a calculation for all the civil. I think that was one of your requests, and it ranges about one forty-five, one fifty.
Are we, but it's ma- mayor and council was, was included in that civil?
No, the council was not included in that, but there, there's a little range on there. So it would probably cover it.
It'd be like three to four thousand dollars.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to see. So the civil raise would be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
Between one forty-five and one fifty.
One forty-five, one fifty, and you're saying if we approve, if we approve a civil raise at three percent, then we might as well throw the council and elected officials in because it's, it doesn't represent a significant portion of that?
It would cover, it would be covered.
It would already be covered. I thought that was the case. Thank you so much. Do you understand that?
Fair enough.
That if we give the civil side a raise, we might as well include ourselves because excluding ourselves and elected officials doesn't move, doesn't move the needle at all. And so also too, when we continue to exclude ourselves and elected officials, we find ourselves also out of pace, out of, what was the word they used to call parity, with other cities and sizes. So I think it's one of those deals where either we do a civil raise, which includes everyone, you know, or not, and the number that the controller just provided, that's one forty-five, one fifty, includes everyone outside of public safety, if that's fair to talk.
Okay. Anyone else?
Has this been to committee yet? I mean, are we able to vote?
We're, we're in committee now.
In committee now.
Right, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting. So we are able, and this is not first reading, so we are able to make a motion.
I mean, your motion is to recommend either favorably or unfavorably, no recommendation.
That's what I'm saying, a favorable, I'm saying we can make a, to full council, right, so it doesn't need a first, right?
So that's all.
So it's in commit, right, okay. I'm just making sure I'm, I'm right thing.
Okay.
So we can make a recommendation to this without, I was making sure we're not putting the cart before the horse. We can make a recommendation on the elected official and look at, and look at the civil side separately in committee, but they come together.
They're separate. They're separate, and we can make, we can make a recommendation on either or.
Well, they're not separate in funding though, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, but for ordinance.
Right, that's what I'm saying, an ordinance, so we're, so recommendations, so we can recommend. Okay, I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me use this thing.
Okay, we need a second?
All right, thank you.
The motion?
Yes.
What is the motion?
I would like to make a motion that we, that we give a three percent raise to, I like to make a motion that I recommend that we give a three percent raise to elected officials.
That would be a favorable?
Favorable recommendation.
Recommendation.
So he's only making a motion to, to recommend it to full council for approval. That's what the motion should be.
We need a second. Thank you, Counselor Masua. Now we need to have a vote, take a vote. Voting. Okay, okay. We have one hundred percent. Thank you, counselors. We will now have proposal number nine, twenty twenty five, read into record by Madam Clerk.
Proposal number nine, twenty twenty five, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the police department and the fire department for the year twenty twenty six.
Do we have any comments? At the October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Oh, so, sorry. It's all right. Counsel Jaws.
All right. My comments in here, I want to make sure that I'm correct. According to, this is, I guess, a rhetorical question or a question for clarity, actually. The C B A does request that we, that we recommend, strong, highly recommends, or we agree to, if the funds were there, to give them a three percent raise within the C B A, right, this year? It's kind of already agreed. Okay. All right, that's what I want to make sure.
Do we have a motion, a discussion? Any other further discussion? Anyone?
I have a question.
Yes.
And here again for clarification, but my understanding was that the, the raises were for union officers and not for the appointed officers, or maybe appointed officers are union, I'm not sure. Does anybody know?
Someone would like to give clarity?
So it's basically asking, are there exempt employees within the department?
Right, because I.
To the, to the C B A.
Because it says here, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees. So there are employees, I think, within the police department that are, I thought this was all just for, the raises were for the officers that were within the union. Am I right, wrong? Is there anybody here from the police department?
Can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you, sir.
Yes, all police officers and firemen are part of their, each of the union, so four sixteen and one fifty-nine. So there's not a member on the police department or the fire department that isn't part of the union.
All employees within the police department are members of the.
Not civil, not civil professional service support, but the police officers in uniform who are all merit police officers are.
Well, I guess my confusion, it says in this proposal number nine, it says appointed officers and employees of the police department. It says employees would not be.
They're going to be separate, so that'd be civil city professional support staff is a separate ordinance. That would be.
On the first one, right, the proposal eight.
Number ten.
Right, oh, ten, ten, okay.
Okay, so should we not go on that subject?
They're not, they're not merit police officers or firefighters.
Right.
So that's number ten, too, in the proposal.
Right, I, yeah, I totally understand. I just didn't think that the employees were supposed to be on this proposal number nine. But they should have been mentioned on proposal number ten. Would that be correct?
That's not correct. So proposal number ten deals with civilian personnel. So they're not merit police officers or merit, you know, firefighters.
Right.
So that's, that's what you had discussed in proposal number ten. Proposal number nine are police officers and firemen.
Period.
Period.
Not, not E M Ts.
No.
Right.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
I'm, I'm, so, and, and ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the police department. So that's completely clear?
I guess the clarity, I guess the confusion would have been, let's say.
And employees, I get what that says.
Who is the and? Right.
Yeah.
I believe it's always been presented that way as, as it relates to the salary ordinance because it's dealing still with employees of the city. But I can see what you're saying on that, but yeah, the civil city side of it is in proposal number ten. That's a billion.
Uh-huh.
Right, right. Because we were concerned, I guess the way you would read it was go, if you approve nine, does non, you know, civilian police person that works at the police department, do they get a raise and someone that works over here doesn't in a way? We want to make sure that's clear. That makes a lot of sense, though.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Who make a motion? Okay, Zach made a motion and seconded by Counselor Giles. Thank you.
Madam President, I would make the, I would like to motion that we make a favorable recommendation to proposal number nine to full council.
Thank you, Counselor. Vote. Okay, we, it's passed. We have one hundred percent. Thank you, counselors. Next, we will have proposal number ten, twenty twenty five. Madam Clerk, would you please read this into record?
Proposal number ten, twenty twenty five, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year twenty twenty six.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At the October fifteenth, twenty twenty five council meeting, this proposal was referred to this committee for consideration and recommendation as part of the budget for twenty twenty six. Do we have any comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Although not included in the proposed budget, I would like to recommend that we give civil service a three percent pay increase for twenty twenty six. And then, just for the good of the order, according to our controller, that amount would be approximately a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand. So as we go through this budget process, we will have to look at reallocating funds to cover that since it's not in the general services budget line.
We'll have to do an appropriation.
No, not an appropriation. We need to reallocate.
We're gonna, yeah, we're going to change some line items. Do we discuss that now? Those lines to be removed, to be changed?
I, I don't. We're on proposal number ten.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I think I'd like to make a motion that we recommend proposal number ten to full council for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Thank you, counselors. Now we'll do a vote. It passed, one hundred percent. Thank you, counselors. Other business. The next agenda item is other business. Is there any other business for this committee for this evening? Counselors? Yes.
Madam President, I have a question about the budget for the police department. If I could get Chief Bigby to come up. Thank you, Chief. In your proposal that you gave us, I got it here, anyway, I got it here somewhere, but it was somewhere around three point eight million dollar increase over this year. Was that about right?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. Are you talking about salaries and wages or what in particular?
Overall increase in, in the police.
That would probably be better for the controller, not for me. I, I have to figure out what line items, what areas you're talking about.
Yeah, that was where my, my, my question was because what we've been told, what we've concluded that the new hires of the new police officers was around seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. And I was just curious because I don't think we've got a definitive what the other three million dollars or whatever the balance was, what exactly that entailed.
I mean, I can only can speak for, the difference probably is dealing with the C B A with the percentage increase according to the C B A and what that financial impact is on that. Our authorized manpower strength is sixty-eight, so it wouldn't go above that from the last time because that was the number from last, from previous budget. So if there's an increase on the salaries and wages portion, that's going to be contributed to the C B A.
It's an increase in the general fund by forty-six percent.
Right, because I know some of the stuff was shipped from, from ARPA funds back into the general fund, and so that probably had that, that difference.
That's the issue. The issue, the issue is that they were paying in the old budget with ARPA funds. They don't have ARPA funds, so they had to go into the general fund.
So they've been fat. That's the issue. Because there's a significant increase. Your, your budget was nine point seven million dollars in twenty-two,
and your proposed budget for twenty-six is fifteen point three million dollars.
Twenty-two, I'm sorry.
In the year of twenty twenty-two, your budget was nine point seven million dollars out of the general fund.
Okay.
In twenty twenty-six, your proposed budget is fifteen point three million dollars out of the general fund.
And so you said in twenty-two.
You were nine point seven million dollars.
And then in twenty-one now?
In twenty-six, now your fif- your proposed budget is fifteen point three off the general fund.
So that's an additional, I mean, so it depends on how you're looking at it, in which I need to go back and look at those numbers that you're, that you're relating to. Back in twenty-two, up to twenty-six now, four years, then you have a difference in, in the C B A for pay increases that are inside of those numbers as well, so.
No, it is.
I would just need to look and see, you know, how much did that represent, and what were the, you know, what were those factors?
And the ARPA funding that we did spend filled a lot of.
Because it was only seven hundred thousand dollars out of ARPA funds, and that was tied to, one was supply line items, another one was dealing with, yeah, one of them was supply line items. Our fuel was in some of that, and so that, that portion was taken into ARPA, but as it relates to salaries and wages out of the general fund for Geo bond or, or the, or the ARPA was like seven hundred thousand dollars max.
Right, according to this.
Trying to figure out where you're getting your numbers from.
According to this budget, one point four million dollar increase in the personal service line, which is a twenty percent increase, and an overall forty-six percent increase off of the general fund. Now, I understand that some of the leases of those vehicles and some of those different things were paid for by ARPA funds or no longer, so that, I agree. I, that's what I, but this is also, again, no offense, but this is also why it's difficult to really look at this budget book in a holistic way when we don't have the entire budget and how it's funded. So like, we can't talk about and show that how the, how the public safety fund funds this percentage and how this does this percentage. We're only seeing how you, how everyone is taxing the general fund, right? So that's where sometimes, you know, because holistically and historically, I, I get that, but that's, I understand that it's reallocating, pulling money here, pulling money there, so it looks like a, a huge increase, but it's really about you had to go get money out of this kitty to fill it instead of that kitty because it's empty, right?
Public safety tax also funds a portion of the general fund, so I don't know how the accountants did the, you know, what percentage represents. Money came out of public safety tax versus what went back into the general fund, so that's why you can see an increase that way in addition to how the ARP and, and Geo bond actually happened during that time.
Actually, in the Geo bond, right? The Geo bond was used to buy vehicles, right?
I believe so. I believe that's where we did not lease. In, in that particular case, we actually purchased those straight out.
Right, so ones that were, the twenty-five that were waiting to get delivered?
No, those are still on hold right now.
We haven't paid for those yet.
We have not paid for those.
Oh.
We took delivery on?
I'm sorry?
We had taken.
No, no.
Those are at the dealership right now.
No, that's the dealership. I thought they were already paid.
No, no.
No.
Okay, that's good.
That's part of the debt service, I believe, in this, in that, in this actual budget, to where it's not a huge impact as it relates to outright purchase of like one point three million dollars versus a lease agreement for five years.
And that lease agreement was approved by the Board of Public Works?
Well, right now, we still have to go through the, through the, it was anticipated because, like I said before, in our workshop, we have vehicles that are two years away from being an antique vehicle license plate, so we need to try to switch some of those vehicles out of our fleet.
Who's driving that car?
It's, it's in our, it's in our fleet. Two thousand sevens, we have two thousand eleven.
I thought we replaced all your cars over the last few years.
We have not. We were so backwards with our vehicle in our fleet for years, and we're just trying to play catch-up now. And it's costing us more money to have the vehicles fixed instead of having.
You just now playing catch-up, Chief?
Yes, like you just seen one of our officers just the other day in an old vehicle. I wonder why they had an old vehicle.
You said what?
You see one of our officers just the other day with an old vehicle.
I don't know what's considered old. I guess, I mean, it's considered, I mean, you know, I mean, it's a difference.
That are out there that are two years away from an antique license plate.
And I don't even know what that is. I'm sorry, I don't know. Maybe all my cars have antique license plates. Hell, I don't know. All right, thank you.
Is there, is, I have one more question, Chief.
Yes, Counselor.
So is the intent to stay flat at sixty-eight officers?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our intent.
That's not flat. We're fifty. We're, we're fifty-nine right now.
No, 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 we're at sixty-three right now, but our authorized manpower strength is sixty-eight. That has not changed.
Right, authorized by, well, recommended.
What's the, the most officers we have, we've had historically?
I know we've been up to sixty, I don't know, sixty-five, sixty-seven in our department, and a lot of that contributes back to if we lose somebody, if somebody's injured, somebody's hurt, and then I'm taxing the officers to do a lot more with less right now. And so that's why we maintain sixty-eight. We knew that, you know, there could be potential complications with the budget, and so we remain flat in our categories as it relates to our authorized.
So I'm confused because let me get some clarity on that now. I'm sorry, I thought I was going home, but you just said something.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Okay, now I gotta take the jacket off.
No, go ahead, take it off.
All right, because you said that you're remaining flat at sixty-eight, so when did you have sixty-eight?
Our authorized manpower strength.
No, 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 I'm talking about when did sixty-eight touch the payroll? Because that authorized stuff, I don't know who authorized that. Whoever authorized it never comes in this room.
So it's, it's not like it's a trick, a joke, or anything like that.
No, I'm asking.
That's been a flat number of sixty-eight from our last budget to this budget, and there has been no increase of that.
So in twenty twenty-two, you had sixty-eight officers?
No. Those numbers had changed, I believe, under Kari. I think it was sixty-five, and then it went to sixty-eight in the last, like, last year.
Have we ever employed sixty-eight officers?
That's what we're trying to be.
No, I'm asking, have we ever employed sixty-eight officers?
No.
No. Have we ever employed sixty-five officers?
Yes.
Okay, so the most we've ever had is sixty-five.
Five to sixty-seven officers is the most that we've had.
So we, so we have had sixty-seven?
I believe so. I can go back and look.
You've been on the department a long time, and you're a very smart man, and you, and you keep track of the administration stuff, so I trust your mind like, like, like it's fact, okay? So you haven't had sixty-seven officers since you've been on the department or been in the go-bag?
I'm not saying that we haven't. I said that our numbers, I believe we have had sixty-seven.
Okay.
Our authorized is sixty-eight.
I understand the authorized, right? There's a lot of things that are authorized that people can't afford. I'm trying to figure out what we have afforded in the past and what may, because if we'd afforded in the past, then that may be a way to figure out how to be continued to afford it in the future. So I'm just trying to figure out sixty, because right now we're at sixty-three, right?
Right now, yes.
Sixty-three. Where did the fifty-nine number come from then?
That was when I first started, about twenty years ago.
So that's a twenty-year number floating around?
Yeah, fifty-nine was when I, my best number was fifty-nine when I got hired.
Your best, so, 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 so we've been at sixty-eight?
No, sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, no, authorized was sixty-eight.
So if you look at the past, three or four years, we've been at, like I said, under Kari was sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Mayor Kari was sixty-five.
Okay, so, so under Kari was sixty-eight.
And he's only been gone two years, so two years. So within the last two years, we've had an increase of only three officers.
To sixty-eight?
Right.
In theory, we never hired them.
We try to hire, we lose people.
I know, I know, it's not to my effort. I'm just trying to figure out who hits the payroll bump. I'm trying to figure out who's, how many people we're paying.
If I'm saying that our authorized, I know you don't like the word authorized, but our authorized manpower strength is sixty-eight, has been in the budget for sixty-eight. Even if we haven't met that number, we've tried to make that number. Even if we haven't met that number, we've tried to make that number multiple of times. So, it's been in our budget for sixty-eight police officers in the last couple of years. That has not changed. We have not increased that number to anything else in this budget that you have in front of you to go above sixty-eight.
I get that. What I'm trying to get to you, sir, I understand that part of it, right? But what I'm saying is you've been, you've been, so what you're saying is you've been doing more with less.
Considerably less, considering, I know.
Five officers less.
Well.
And that's a lot, that's considerable.
More like sixty-some police officers, because if you're looking at national averages, like you said in our meeting, right? You said in our meeting that we try to get to the FBI standards.
I never said that. I've never said that. I've never.
I know, I've never reviewed the tape, but you said we try to be with FBI standards, that's what you said at our meeting.
That's a misunderstanding, because I ain't never said.
FBI standards is two point one-three officers per thousand residents, in which we should be at about a hundred and twenty police officers.
I know, but we should also have a higher public safety tax rate. People should pay more taxes so we can afford it, but we're not there.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Please go to whoever that needs to be to get those taxes increased for public safety.
Well, go down and march downtown to get us a public safety tax increase.
I mean, that's you guys, I mean, that's the council.
When I cut your budget, don't come complaining to me.
No.
Go complain downtown because our general fund cannot afford you.
That's fine, if you knew that, if you knew that there was an issue with the public safety tax, that should have already been done.
I've been complaining about that for quite a while.
So, why hasn't it been done with them down there?
I'm not one person, they have to approve it, but I'm just saying, I have to do what the means that we have.
If we know that there's an issue with public safety and public safety tax, there should have been a discussion way before today about trying to raise those taxes.
Do you understand how that works? I'm telling you that we don't even have a play on that. I'm saying your city county council does.
I know that it has to happen with, with Indianapolis, they have to be a part of that discussion.
You don't know what conversation has or haven't been said.
Well, it hasn't happened, I mean, as, as it relates, I'll give you that. As it relates to identifying and making sure those dollars come back to the city of want.
You're changing the point. The point I'm trying to make is, let me make it very clear what I'm trying to make. We ideally, I was trying to say that you were saying that our authorized number is this.
Right, yes.
And I'm saying to you that, in my mind, that's an ideal number. And, no, I'm just, please let me finish. In my mind, that's an ideal number and it would be ideal that we could afford that number. But according to the general fund, we cannot afford that number without making some other cuts or some other significant things to afford that number. And I was saying ideally, it would be ideal if the public safety tax was higher so that I wouldn't have to lean so much on the general fund to meet the FBI record or whatever's the approved number. But because we only got so much money in the pot, I'm asking you, sir, and you've done a fine job and the officers have done a fine job with the resources we have according to the community and according to the crime statistics that you provided us. So, we're trying to make a fair valuation of what the services that the city needs and what the city can afford holistically. And, and you should be, the folks of public safety are our most valued member and our most expensive member. So, typically, the most valued person in the house and the most expensive person in the house is the one that feels the cut. And so, I'm trying to figure, I think we're all collectively trying to figure out how to lessen that burden on you and find one point five million dollars for the holistic health of this city. And I am asking you and I am pushing you and I am prodding you because I'm hoping that I can go back with my fellow councilmen and say, Chief said this, maybe we got an inch here. Or Chief said that, we can't do that. And I'm trying, but if, if we don't get any give, then we're just going to have to rip it and it may not be what you like, you know?
The only thing that I would say to that is that we've been operating off last for several years. And as it relates to our, our authorized manpower strength or whatever, we kept it at sixty-eight. And it's not my fault, not my staff's fault or anybody else's fault that we haven't made it to that number. In law enforcement, it's very difficult to get officers without them going to another agency. If I'm overworking my officers here, having them do this and do that and staying short all this time, I have to make a lot of huge considerations as reducing, you know, public safety services here in the city. If that number goes below that, because I cannot consistently have my officers operating at a lower number and then we're getting complaints from everybody talking about speeding here, speeding there. So, how am I going to look at that and I'm taxing my officers to do a lot more with less for several years? And that's why we try to remain at our sixty-eight number and we've been trying to get there for, you know, for at least the past couple of years or maintaining our maximum authorized strength. Just right now, in public safety, as you know, back in, back in two thousand and nineteen pandemic time and then all the other world events, it's very difficult to get people into public safety. And so, now, I'm at a point now where I'm, like I said, I'm forcing these guys to work a lot, a lot more with less. And that's why I'm trying to maintain my numbers at sixty-eight, so at least I can have a reprieve for my officers and them not having to work all this overtime, having, them have to do trade days and everything else. Just to, you know, have a, a basic life and them going run to run to run. And so, that's the reason why, you know, I want to make sure that we stay at that sixty-eight number. I didn't ask for anything above that, it's just that right now it's very difficult for us to get our officers at the max level on the books without them, one, going to another department or doing something else.
Okay, I got one other further question. Didn't you say you have a couple of guys in the academy now?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so one of the consideration, right, is because it's difficult to get officers to commit to our city, I think that's a very compelling story to say, hey, guys, let's not turn away the guys that we've recruited. So, let's say you wanted five more officers.
I mean, they're in the queue right now, in the actual process right now.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So, what I'm saying is, let's say, I'm just saying, you got, let's say you got two more that's in the queue, right? And so, since they're in the queue and the mayor also put a hiring freeze on, what if we're in agreement to say, we find the funding for two more officers instead of five more officers because these folks have already made a commitment to the works? And then we leave it at that and that might be a good, fair, yeah, oh, come on, man, I'm trying to work with.
I understand what you're saying. I hear the negotiation, but I don't want to go, like I said, I'm not going to, like I said, continue to have the officers, especially, you know, to.
All right, but the World Series baseball's coming on then, ain't it? Let's just wrap this up, thank you.
Any other questions?
I tried.
Thank you.
Chief, free, Chief, I'm sorry, free takeoff. You say that the standard is sixty-eight and that is.
No, that's not the standard. That's what we, that's our approved authorized manpower strength.
Okay, but there are some requirements, is it a state requirement, a federal requirement that you?
No, with police officers, there is no federal requirement. What it shows is an average of how many officers there should be per thousand residents of a city. So, in the state of Indiana right now, it's two point three officers on average per thousand residents. The standard with the FBI is two point one, but the state of Indiana right now is two point three and we're at like one point, one point six, one point seven is where we're at. So, we're way below that number.
And you need five officers to get to that number?
No, we don't. We need like seventy police officers to get to that number.
How many?
It should be right around a hundred and twenty police officers. For a city of this size, there at least should be a hundred and twenty police officers.
I think barely four sixty-eight.
Yeah, I, just a Wayback Machine kind of a question and, because you know, I've lived here a long time and the, you know, back in the more settled days even. And I'm back, matter of fact, lady sitting right behind you, she used to be a reserve officer.
And she was director of communications.
And director of communications, so she's got a lot of experience in the Wayback Machine.
Yes.
And would it be beyond the pale, and I, and I don't mean to offend anybody by this, but if there are shortages, well, let me back up before I ask this question. The, in this organizational chart, you have, you know, all the powers to be in the police department. Are all these upper brass people, I guess for lack of a better word, are they all salary? Are you guys, are you all paid hourly?
We're paid out of the general fund salaries and, and wages just like everyone else.
Hourly?
That's only on the, not in that, not in that sheet that you're looking at because those are police officers and or appointed and the director, like the director of communications is in that.
Right, I see that.
Yes.
But what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is, actual police officers that would be on this chart, would they be considered salary or considered?
They're salary, yes.
They would be salary?
Yes, sir.
Because I, I remember, and Helen can back me up on this and maybe, I'm sure she remembers, that when there was a shortage, for whatever reason, of police officers, you would see, you know, your upper echelon out in the police car.
They are working as well. Actually, just last Friday, Deputy Chief Klein was out working the road with the guys over two shifts. I've been out there with the officers as well, not probably as much as, you know, everyone else, but our captains have been out there working. So, everybody's doing their fair share as, as, as it relates to working. Everybody is working.
Okay, well, that was my question. And two other concerns that might be a little off the chart while I got you in front of me. You and I talked, I guess it was any upstairs meeting, about this, you know, this halfway home across the street from me. I cannot find that man from the state licensing his information. I would ask you, as the chief of police, that your police officers, when they make a run, and the same with the fire department, when the fire department makes a run to that location, to please make a report and submit it to the state licensing person, I'm sure you've got the provision.
It really just depends on what that run is because every run that we go on is generated by a CAD report. So, we can put notes into that and, and if we need to send that over to somebody, but not an actual physical report because it really just depends on what that actual run is going to be. But each run that is generated is attached to a CAD report.
Well, I know a lot of this man's licensing requirements hinge upon police and fire activity to this location. And from what I've been told, when I talked to the man, and this was after some time, and I, and at the time, I knew there was a bunch of police runs made to this place, that there wasn't, he said there wasn't any reports.
Madam Chair, point of order, can we, we have a lot to cover, can, I'm sorry, Counsel Wells, can we get back on track?
And I can follow with you about that, Counsel Wells, that's not a problem.
I really wish you would.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Sorry. Any, anything further?
Thank you.
For, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussions with any other department heads? Anything else? Before we finish?
Um, I do have a question and I want to say thank you to the controller for responding to some of the budget questions that the council had as a, as a whole. I think as it relates to the question regarding cost-saving measures, and my question was, is there, is there anything happening basically now or in two thousand and twenty-six other than the hiring freeze to look at cost-saving measures? I, I understand why we are where we are, the negative impacts and like why we are where we are right now, but outside of the hiring freeze, is there anything else that's being done or looked at?
Well, e- even other than the, just the negative impacts, during our budget workshops, initially, we were at seven point, I believe it's seven point one million. But during our workshops, that's when we actually consulted with all the department heads and they actually did cut their budgets, so that's why we are at three point one and not at seven.
And do you happen to recall, like, out of those cuts, what types of, you know, to get to that number, that's a big number? What were like the top two categories or whatever that they had to cut to get to that number?
Okay, so we went from streets, police and fire, so for what, specific line item? No, I can't tell you.
No, not specific, but was it capital, was it personal services, was it?
It was mostly services, a lot of probably maybe other services and just a process of maybe moving some line items around. I know a lot of the departments moved line items around to cover stuff that they thought that maybe they could get through to the end of the year and didn't need. So, that was just pretty much a lot of me actually consulting with them to cut their budgets.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions with any other department heads?
Um, I would just, I don't know, do we have another committee of a whole meeting scheduled?
Thursday.
Thursday. So, I think that it's just worth noting that it's appreciated that an additional seven million dollars were, of cuts were made to get us where we are at this point. We're really going to have to dig a little deeper to find another one point five million dollars. So, that's something that this council will be working to see what can be done and hopefully, if any of you all have any ideas or suggestions, we would certainly be open to those. But that will sort of be what our meeting on Thursday will entail is how we can feasibly get to that one point five million. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Counselor. Anything else, anyone else? Okay, meeting adjourned.